Six o'clock, let's call this meeting. Here's my pledge.
Let us make just to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. It's Monday, August 5th. This is our regular board meeting. First up, we're gonna jump to Dan. You want to present first? I thought Matt was going to be here, but Matt has sent the board a couple of emails talking about the fact that we're ready for this, right? This is one Broadway?
Yeah. I'll do it from the distance. You can see. The project required a variance because we have a lot here which only has thirty foot depth where ninety is required. And the reason the depth is that narrow is because there's a needsmen through here to get to this daycare and this self-storage. So we are sort of limited in there. So that lot is the lot we're creating by the subdivision. We also are going to increase this basement, which now serves east to the woman, would spend to serve all the lines. So it'll stop at the city boundary. This one right here is the city boundary from the city and city of all the villages of Manans. I made questions, I'll try to answer them.
This was previously approved by the zoning board.
Yeah.
And then for financing reasons, now we had to go back to the zoning board.
Yeah.
Get re-apply for relief.
Yeah.
Because it's now a sec- because you wanted as a separate parcel.
Yeah, the, we originally were to keep it part of the same process and then we needed a variance from the rear line restriction. And we were granted that and now that we try to make the HUD financing toll, we have to create a separate one.
We got it. Okay, so this is sort of a redo.
Yeah.
Okay. And tonight, we are we are, you're asking for what tonight?
The final subdivision approval for this.
So the zoning board has said, the setbacks are now granted relief.
Yeah.
You've been issued your letter.
Yeah.
And now all we have to do is the board, the board votes to, to issue you a separate one.
Correct.
Okay. Any other board have questions, concerns? Okay. Someone want to make a motion to grant the subdivision as, as documented and applied?
Motion regarding the one Broadway subdivision, the variance. Yeah, is this spoken?
Oh, I don't know if it's so.
All right, I'll motion to approve the approval of the major subdivision of parcel number six, six point five dash one dash one three point one for the creation of a new parcel within the Broadway Business District.
Okay. All those in favor?
Right.
Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
All right, Dan, I'll get, I'll get these signed by tomorrow and get them off the other.
Okay. I don't know whether or not, I may have to get you some additional copies for filing purposes. I don't know. We'll set down a wide on copy. So we'll make sure we get them.
Thank you.
Here.
See you soon, Dan. All right, let's go back. Number one, we need an motion for approval of the minutes. I made some minor spelling and grammatical changes. So what's in the, what's in the drive folder is now correct.
Let's make a motion to accept and then it's for July fifteenth.
Second.
All those in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? All right, we'll go to warrants and payroll.
Yep, warrant number four X, general totaling forty-two thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight dollars and twenty-two cents. Warrant number five, general totaling eighty thousand, three hundred and twenty-three dollars and seventy-three cents. Water totaling seven thousand, eighty-seven dollars and fifty-eight cents. Sewer totaling five hundred and sixty-seven dollars and fifty-four cents for a grand total of eighty-seven thousand, nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars and eighty-five cents. Payroll three X totaling one hundred and forty-two dollars and ninety cents.
That was to
Retro pit.
Yeah, that was for Sue and, and Sheik to, their payroll was off with the, the grace that started the beginning of the year. So this was making them whole.
I forgot to give them the percentage. And payroll number four totaling one hundred and thirty-six thousand, two hundred and forty dollars and sixty-three cents. No transfers.
Okay, we need, and then the totals, one thirty-six, three eighty-three, fifty-three.
Yep.
Need a motion.
Motion?
Second. All those in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? On those transfers. Chris Flint messaged me. He has made an offer for a court clerk to replace Mike who moved on. Did, did everyone get her resume?
Who's in the drag?
Who's in the drag? Okay. Her name is Emily. And she is currently working at a law firm. I met her and she is super nice. She lives in Watervillee. And so, of course, Judge Flint asked if we would appoint her. She would like to start August nineteenth.
Well, if I have this, what we have put in the budget this year for this.
Yeah, correct, yes.
I'll motion to approve Emily Biddlecombe as stepping in.
Second.
All those in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? All right, number five, Lobella is still working with Dan on the Irving situation. We hope that that will be resolved next meeting and we can put that behind us. We've already motioned on number six, so that is all set. Annually, we pay the Albany County Stormwater Coalition a part of the fees to be part of that group. The annual twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five membership dues is six thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars. And I think that's about on car work where it's been.
Yeah, probably on borrow last year. It used to be nine thousand. So it went down. So that's good.
Okay, in the right direction. So I need a motion to sign that agreement and issue the, the payment for that service.
Make a motion to accept the annual membership to store Marshall as you have in county of six thousand, four hundred.
Second.
All those in favor?
All right.
Any opposed?
Everyone has to vote. It was, I'm just saying, everyone has to vote.
Yes.
So, no, I didn't hear.
Yes.
From everyone. Okay.
Yes.
Okay, just making sure. You didn't have enough yes votes. To hear from everyone.
I'm a yes and less noted.
Yes. Okay. Do you want me to bring this over to you now or?
No, hold on, thank you. You're still working with the ADA compliance group. We had one meeting. And we're still working to set up a second one based on some of the information we collected during the proposal from the sidewalk company. There were some questions about what we do along the railroad tracks. Where does the, where does the village's property end and where does the railroad tracks begin? And how do we transition across the railroad tracks? So that's something that, that the group is going to be looking into. Because that affects both Brookside and Nanro.
So Nanro, it stops because of rail. Um, station. Brookside is probably the only one it goes. And it doesn't really go all the way to. It stops on Lance's. Kind of turned into grass now.
Yes, so the question was how do we fill in those panels?
Yeah.
For what new, new sidewalk? So that the path is gonna be.
So it would go all the way to?
Correct.
Oh, okay. So we're gonna have to pay somebody from the company to come sit there so we can do that.
My God. So we're still looking into, into that, that project. But the meeting, we had our first kickoff meeting and we're gonna continue with that one. Mary Jane is not here. She was going to come tonight to meet everybody. So.
Could be the weather.
Yeah. Our village handbook is not specific about residency requirements except for the village clerk. Is that fair? Okay, so I would like to amend the village handbook to allow employees to reside within Albany County or in a budding county. For instance, if an employee lives just across the river in Troy, I just found it to be defined in the handbook that as long as they're in a budding county, it is sufficient. The exception would be the village clerk. So I drafted a proposal for a residency requirement policy. I just want everybody to look at it for next meeting to potentially consider. Okay. Mary Jane starts September third. So hopefully, if we approve this during the August nineteenth meeting.
Yeah.
She'll start the third and she's gonna live in across the river in Mansley.
So.
What, who's there? I hope so. Such on the day.
Cause Labor Days.
Yeah.
I have been working with Mike Hagman on improving some, some parking around the back of two fifty Broadway. We're putting together some proposals to do some excavation work and some retaining wall work to create some parking for for the clerk, for the justices, for police personal vehicles and get them out of the front so that there's more parking for handicapped seniors, anyone who needs the parking in the front. And, and so that's the goal there. We're trying to make sure that we have adequate parking for anyone who needs to use the building. That's from the general public and try and limit the use of import, by the parking of employees. So that's something that I've been working on and, and will continue to work on that and hopefully bring a proposal to the board for consideration. On that same vein, I have been working with Phil Steck's office to potentially secure some funding in the twenty twenty-five budget. All of the elements that I am going to propose, we seek funding for our improvements for this particular building, including roof repairs, a new fire alarm system. Our fire alarm system in this building is very much out of date. Some masonry work, we've talked about the potential removal of the hose, the former hose tower, new access control system, some other security upgrades that the security audit for the court had noted. We need in order to be secure there, creating some handicap access with automatic doors and a couple of other improvements around, around town here in this building. So total is about three hundred thousand dollars. Some Lobella money I threw in there, fifteen thousand dollars for their engineering services. I am going to ask Assemblyman Steck for two hundred and fifty thousand of that three hundred and fourteen. And the villages paid that that would be sixty-four thousand dollars. So that's, that's the request. I'm hoping that the board will agree is a deserved investment in this building. It's been a while since we've invested that kind of money in this building. I think it's desperately needed. So I would like the board's permission to sign this letter and request this funding from Phil Steck. And I'm very confident that we will be able to secure it in the budget.
I'll make a motion to buy the same grants through Phil Steck's office.
Second.
All those in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? I'm hoping we might even get three hundred thousand, but that would be good. Let's see. I've mentioned to the board, we were recently cited by Department of Environmental Conservation for our leaf dump, which we've been using for fifty years. I am currently negotiating with the city of Albany to use their yard waste processing facility, which incidentally is right on the edge of Nan's. I am working on a deal to give us access to that on an annual basis, just like a ticket, you know, like so that we can kind of go as we need to. And hopefully, it will be cheaper than the cost that we are currently paying Galavan to take our yard waste, which is our only option considering they don't, the D E C don't allow us to use the dump any further. So I'll be back to the board the next meeting with, hopefully, a negotiated proposal and we'll consider it and move forward with that.
Thank you for doing that.
You're welcome. Eric Looper is here. This is reconsideration of the sale of a piece of property on Canal. The appraisal was done and came back at a fifteen hundred dollar valuation. I emailed Eric and you are agreeable to pay that fifteen hundred dollars for that piece of, piece of Canal?
Yes.
Okay, so would the board consider a motion to sell that piece similar to what we did with Chris's Mid-City Tavern? So that we can create a parking space and the agreement within the proposed de-transfer would be that you're agreeable that no structure can be built.
Correct.
Someone want a motion for that?
I motion to agree to the sale.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? So we will be in touch and your attorney will create the rest of the documents then.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks, Eric. For your patience on that whole. I sent some pictures to the board of some, some tree issues that we have in the back of two fifty. Groundscaping, which is also known as Northeast Trees, who has done some significant work for us, has given us a bid of forty-five hundred dollars to remove all those trees and pull all of the the dead limbs off of our fiber and telephone lines. I asked Mike about it. He thinks it's a good price for that, that amount of work. So before the trees bring down those wires, I'd like to approve the expenditure of forty-five hundred dollars to remove them. It's coming out of account. Coming out of DPW account zero four four two, which is removal of trees and there's seventy-five hundred dollars in that account for that.
And Mike didn't have that money at all and spread anything else at this point tree wise?
Nope. The only other thing that we have on the tree budget is to do the Brookside trimming and that was, I think, twenty-five hundred dollars. So we should be ready.
All with the motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? All right. Five years ago, Crichton Manning had done a sign study throughout Nan's that evaluated appropriate and inappropriate signs based on uniform traffic code. It seems like forever that that survey was done. The results of that survey, including the to make sure that our code matches every sign that's out there so that the infractions, for instance, are enforceable. That was never completed either. So I want to consider going back, right, demanding and not only revisiting the study that was done dated December fourth, two thousand and seventeen, but also help our guys implement all of those changes and the resulting changes to our code. They have estimated a maximum value for that work to be twenty-five hundred dollars. And so I'm seeking the board to consider approval of that so that we can get all these signs changed and implemented into our code. These include sign work on Clifford Railroad, which is now Station Street, Sage Hill, Peyton Circle, Graffhunder, Monroe Terrace, Folsby, Folsby Court, McCaffrey and some other. So there were a total of, I think, a hundred different sign changes that, that they were they were looking to make here and there. Some signs would go in, some signs would come out, but the work was never completed. Knew that question was gonna come up and I put it somewhere. Don't remember. I don't remember. But I will, I will find out.
Finally, we had suffer signs. I thought, I thought we already reordered signs. So that was gonna be my next question is that we already ordered.
So we ordered, we had, we had stop signs already. We had holes for stop signs and then we had children at play signs. So.
This is just a review.
This is the review.
It doesn't include buying any signs.
Yeah, so I think this would be under contracted services.
Yeah.
Under DPW Highway. That's where I would think it would come out of. I can verify.
What was the amount?
Twenty-five hundred dollars. And that's a maximum amount. Like there, it's just an escrow.
Okay.
But for instance, there's not enough children at play signs around Ganser Smith Park coming and going from, you know, Lions Station, et cetera. So that's one of the things that, that is included in this, in this survey. So I need a motion to sign that, that proposal.
I'll motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Okay. How about yard waste? I am working with National Grid to do our annual benchmarking survey to get more clean energy climate smart points. You have to do that every year and post it. They're working on getting us all over greater. Remember, community night is August twenty-first. And the gala is September twenty-first. Let's see, our sales tax came in for the quarter and it was twenty-four thousand dollars higher than expected. So that's positive. For sales tax, everybody keep spending. Later this week, I am meeting with DEC and Lobella about our discovery of a tire pond along the railroad tracks. We talked about that before. We're looking at potentially getting some grant funding from DEC and so they've been helpful in understanding that we've discovered that even though it's been there fifty years, like yes. We're gonna keep looking to figure out a reasonable solution for that. So.
What is it? Can I, I'm near it?
A tire, a tire pond?
A tire pond?
Yeah, somebody, somebody threw hundreds of tires into a pond that is.
On the tracks?
Next to the, next to the tracks. Behind, behind, we think they came behind from Williams Press.
Line Broadway, yeah, New Hall.
Village Press?
We remember Williams, the Williams Press building?
Yeah, Williams Press.
So behind there, there's.
Tire pond?
There's a tire pond.
Oh.
You can see it from space. So. That's right.
Okay, got it.
Uh, let's see. We are going to be sending residents who have not paid their taxes letters starting next week to say it's overdue. There is a Capital Legion Transportation Council is doing some outreach to share your vision about roadways and safe roadways, including all modes of transportation. The next one is the fourteenth at the Watervillee Seniors Center at fifteen oh one Broadway in Watervillee. I will be posting that to the website in case people want to participate in that survey. We had talked a few weeks ago about the condition of the generator in the water plant that's down on Broadway at four seven three Broadway. Right? Five eighty-nine, sorry. It's close.
Five eighty-nine A.
Five eighty-nine A. The generator has to be thirty years old, if not more. It needs to be replaced considering that is our water central up. We got a quote from Castleman Electric for a generator to be now mounted outside instead of inside. Their quote was twenty-six thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars. I asked them if we could buy the equipment ourselves and just have them do the electrical work and installation. They agreed to that. We can buy the equipment, the generator, the switch, the battery backup, the pad for it to be mounted, et cetera, for six thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two dollars. And they would install it for eleven thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars. So that brings the total to eighteen thousand, four hundred roughly versus twenty-six thousand, two. That is the best solution, providing the exact same equipment that they were going to physically charge us more for. Is very important that we get that backup generator.
Right, that's gonna be natural gas there?
It's gonna be natural gas, yes. So that does not change. Yeah. This comes out of the water account. Dave is aware of, of this and has been, has advocated for its replacement as well. So there's two parts to this. I'd like the board, the board to consider accepting the, the proposal for eleven thousand, six twenty-five for Castleman Electric to install the generator and then we're going to purchase the generator from Power Generators Direct. It's a generic generator, switch, Wi-Fi battery and all of the systems, all of the stuff that goes with it. So it's two purchases for six thousand, seven thirty-two ninety-nine and.
Six thousand?
Six, six thousand, seven hundred, thirty-two ninety-nine. And then the installation is eleven thousand, six twenty-five from Castleman. So fortunately, this is the, just to give everybody the example, the, a, a commercial generator would be thirty-nine thousand dollars. So this is a solution that absolutely takes care of this problem. So someone want a motion to make those two expenditures total eighteen thousand, three fifty-one ninety-nine?
I'll make a mention.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Any want to post?
What was, can you just give me the install now?
Eleven, six twenty-five. And that's from Castleman and Nan's based women owned business. So that's.
Okay.
Awesome, thank you. All right, let me see where we're. Lobella is working with Dave and myself for completing the lead line service in inventory. That's gonna help us meet the compliance that's due in October for that. With the state, we are well ahead of the game and we should have that, excuse me, completed well before that due date. We will then seek funding for the placement of all of those lead service lines. Which is, there's tons of money out there and considering we're, we're one of the few people who is ready with our inventory, we should be easily granted enough money to cover all of those that we need to replace, which is a good thing. Next meeting with Tim's back, we'll go over the, the proposal for the EV chargers. We're finalizing that whole proposal, but I put that on the agenda for the next meeting. Let me see what else. I think that's about it. All right, okay. Imagine to, I actually covered everything. Rusties.
I saw that the city of Albany got their speed limits reduced to twenty-five. There'd be so many fewer road tests for that.
Yes. So, uh, I, I am writing to Phil Steck, uh, for the next legislative session to ask him to consider, uh, amending the law that says you have to do that extensive survey and study before you implement a twenty-five speed limit. It seems like it's, it, you know, for some municipalities, it's cost prohibitive. So hoping that.
Well, we've got someone to pay for their test to city of Albany.
It's like Albany, Waukesha.
Yeah.
It's a community based organization. Well.
No, it was like a major company. Um.
Private?
I must say it was CDT A, but they like got a company to pay for their test that funded.
It's gonna change the speed limit to twenty-five miles.
Reduce the speed limits.
So it's, it'd be on village roads. So it wouldn't be on like Broadway, Van Rynslar, three seventy-eight. Um, obviously seventy-seven. It'd just be on village owned roads.
Uh. I know the city of Albany changed it. Didn't they go down to twenty-five?
Yeah.
I was wondering if they were doing the same thing.
Uh, I, I'll start looking into that, about the funding, see if there's a source for it. Tripway did it.
Tripway has a foundation for traffic safety and they paid for the study.
I don't know what more we need to study. I mean, slower is better.
Safety.
It's bouncing now. I'm sorry. Dog so that's. Um, all right.
That's it.
Uh, all right, we'll go to, uh, other comment.
Bill, I'm Bill Garvey. I live in Minnes. I got quite a few issues, but I'll just read a few. Now, I do support this local law number three of twenty twenty-four use of off-road vehicles here in Menan's. Plus, I'm glad that the local law has finally been amended. I also support the pickleball place on ninety Broadway. And number three, I'm concerned about village residents issues. It's already written here, so there's no need for me to say. And number four, it's already said about straight train still blown whistles between seven, ten o'clock at night until seven o'clock in the morning in the northern part of the village of Menan's. Now, at village one apartments road connected to Broadway, I see vehicles fail to slow down or to stop when pedestrians are trying to cross broadways by the fact that pedestrians press the caution button, which signals light it up yellow. That's the crosswalk signal device. I've seen this many times and I don't, if I report to the police, they won't be able to catch you. That's the whole problem. Now during last year's, my understanding that four twelve Broadway home was damaged due to some fire. It still doesn't seem like it's been repaired, so I'd like to make a proposal. You know, to convert the four twelve Broadway home into a Georgian style house. George is one of my favorite kind of building styles. And since I report about that short green bus shelter.
Bill, that, that four twelve Broadway is sold and somebody's working hard.
But I still like to see it converted to a Georgia style home. As I said, it's one of my favorite kind of building style. And since I report about that one short green bus shelter on west side of Broadway, which was next to former Walgreen Drug Store, which is still missing. Well, when I was visiting Skyler in Hotel Property, I found out that this short green bus shelter is on Skyler in property. Now, I don't know what, what was doing there and I'd like to know why is this short bus shelter owned by CDT A on the hotel property? That's what I would like to know.
Where?
It's on Skyland Hotel Property.
Yeah, but whereabouts?
That's been there for a while now.
Yeah, for some while.
Yeah.
But why it's there, I'd like to know. I was told that they're gonna use it again, but the question is when? Another thing. Now, while visiting Beale Road, I observed one fire hydrant on west side of that village street, you know, several feet north of it, the temple. I can't pronounce it. It's part been partly covered with weeds and brush. I did report this to the Menan's Police and Don Aaron and I found out that the brush, brush and weeds have been cleared from that fire hydrant and I'd like to thank the Public Works guys for doing this. I appreciate it. I wish to propose a village ordinance to forbid bringing and consumption of any alcohol, beverage in any of our parks and playgrounds, particularly during our annual village picnic because it could cause problems. And since there is continued concern about Amsterdam Avenue being used as a speedway, which should not be a speedway. I'm requesting that the speed limit should be reduced from thirty to, I mean, from thirty to twenty miles an hour. You'll be posting on that street as well as on Wolf Road and Hart's Lane.
Plenty is against the law.
It is?
Yes.
Sorry, I didn't know. I like to see the speed reduce because Amsterdam Avenue, Wolf Road is Hart's Lane. They are not speedways. They are next, pretty soon.
It was against the laws. I can't hear very well.
Uh.
Someone's against the law.
The law says, so recently, New York State allowed municipalities to reduce their speed limit from thirty to twenty-five. The law was thirty is the lowest that it can be.
Oh.
They recently reduced that and gave you the option to go to twenty-five. But to go to twenty-five, you have to do this of this study uh, across the whole municipality about how it would impact traffic and so on. Which is why we haven't done it because it's an expensive study to do.
Okay, so. Well, I'm sorry. I didn't know.
No problem.
Now, remember, I see you got my paper on there. What's it all about?
This?
Yeah.
You gave me this.
When did I give you? Oh, those two projects?
Yeah.
You need copies of it?
I'm good.
All right, but I am been waiting, you know, seven months, you know, and I even promised. Yeah, those two projects such.
Well, answer the other.
That was a different one.
All right.
The two of them was about replacing those black street light markers on Broadway, both sides. Replacement postmodern street light markers. And the other one is to have a couple of memorial monuments at Switzer Pope Park. Remember?
We're working on that.
All right. But I'd like to get a reply on both of my projects. You know, I've worked very hard on it. And I have creative ways of doing things when I propose projects.
Appreciate it, Bill. Anything else?
Well.
You good?
Well, I would, well, I would hope I could wait till September to give me a reply. Will that be enough time?
I just wrote myself a note.
All right, thank you. I'm done. Thank you for letting me speak on important topics. I'm done.
And then one is before we jump in, uh,
I was just gonna say the CDT A bus thing might be the one that they took out from in front of the old buddy because it was a question.
That's what he's saying. That's what now is wrong. And they want to put in a cross from Glenwood Road where there is no path and no bus shelter. That would be a great idea.
It's been right next to metal street light marker number seventy-eight. As I regret to discover on that metal street light.
Yeah, I haven't seen it, but.
Well, why?
Um, we had talked about a committee for the, uh, close Switzer Park, uh, improvements. Lisa, are you gonna be part of that?
I did get it. Yes, I guess. I yeah.
Okay, and, uh, and we've invited two others as well. So, so, uh, uh, we're putting that together. Anyone else?
Well.
Sorry.
Well, I would, it's nothing big. I would like to see a nice spawning on Broadway. Village of Menan's with some of the most recent things going on, activities and different, like they have down the school. They have a sign in the school. They have a sign in every city of Waterbury.
Yeah.
Play some, everybody has a sign but Menan's. It's the only deserved sign.
So, uh, part of.
Are you working on it?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
I don't like so many. I have something to say.
The plan is, is to first start with the parking, paving, right? And then work on some additional improvements and keep going for about four or five different phases. Uh, so what I talked about with some of the stuff in the back uh, gives us the opportunity to concentrate then on the.
But I'm glad it's under work because everybody's got a sign.
Agreed, yes. The fire department has, and the fire company has been wanting a sign for as long as I can remember.
Good. Then the other thing is our thousand dollars for transportation. Was that okay when you came back with the, um, with the budget?
We talked about it at the end of class.
We get an extra thousand dollars.
Amending it, yes, yeah. Uh, we did not amend the budget yet, but there is money and you need it. So don't worry about it.
Oh, really?
Yes.
Okay.
Thousand dollars is probably the bargain of the day.
Okay, just wondering. I have plans.
Yeah.
No, I'm always planning.
All right. Anything else?
I'm good.
You good?
Hi, um, I was about to talk about it. Um, I was here a couple of months ago to talk about the, um, concerns about traffic on Kingston Street. So now that it's been a couple of months, I just wanted to follow up and see if, um, there's been any thought put into more permanent solutions to help with. Um, I mean, I know you guys are working on the speed limit issue and I know that's, that's a longer project. That's a, you know, um, but in the meantime, and especially thinking about schools starting up again, um, you know, we wanna make sure that, um, we just have something in place. Um, I mean, you know, after we were here last time, um, there were officers there. Um, there were only eighteen days left at school, um, and then they haven't been there. But the cars, that doesn't change the situation. Just because school's not in session, still an issue. Um, so I'm curious what.
So you missed a couple of meetings after you were here. So we did put the trailer, the speed trailer there to try and capture some data about what speeds were actually coming and going. Um, and we put them on Amsterdam. Kingston's really tough to get adequate, you know, real research because it's just not, it, it's hard to capture, um, you know, that, that data. They did, they did show that the speeds were not, the majority of the speeds were not violations of the thirty miles an hour. In fact, the, the average speed was just over twenty. Uh, so.
Can I just, um, I do remember, um, when I was here, Don did bring up the fact that the data doesn't account for, um, how, how that mean is calculated because most of the cars that are going through that area are us and our neighbors and we are going at, I mean, I, I know like fifteen, you know, ten approaching. That was right at our house, you know, that, that, um, club. Um, so when it takes all of that, that significantly lowers, um, the overall average.
Yeah.
Um, and so I don't, it sounded like there wasn't a way to really examine the difference in the people, the people going to eight hundred North Pearl, their speed versus the residents. Um, and I, I mean, I, I know that that's like we can't.
Part of it, part of it is, it's, it's difficult, it's difficult to discern what exactly is, if it's thirty miles an hour on any of those roads, seems like it's fast. And thirty miles an hour isn't a violation. So that's why we're considering lowering that to twenty-five, which, you know, still on those roads seems fast. Um, so even if we change all the speeds throughout the village to twenty-five, it's still fast on those narrow, you know, those narrow streets, especially if anyone's parked on them. So really the, the, what needs to happen is changing behavior of the people who are coming out of North Pearl. Okay, and so one of the things that we're talking about is, is doing, um, uh, Kingston, uh, during the renovation and the south end infrastructure work and including that and potentially putting a permanent speed bump, um, on that section of the road. That's something that we've talked about.
I'd also like to see Kingston itself get bumped out because it's such a big turn. You know, make it more defined. It's just an open area and that. Maybe put a sidewalk in, grass, you know?
Yeah.
This is just a huge.
Too, because when we pull out right at the end, that big opening and when we're pulling out, key cars are whipping past us when we are actively pulling out of our driveway.
Yeah, so I think bumping that out with the new south end remodel next year.
Yeah.
Where it already be ripping up the road.
Exactly.
Had a little bit.
Now, it's gonna be a bump or a dip because I know part of the issue was.
We're looking at both, um, as, as part of the engineering. The, the, the problem was, the problem with a dip there is it can collect stormwater because it's, because of the grain.
Yeah.
So if you go into hose along Columbia Street, uh, the, the very steep hill, there are, they created these side gardens that actually accept stormwater.
Yeah.
And there are flowers and, and so it's a bump out. It takes up space, but it also helps with stormwater.
Yeah, with drainage.
So with drainage. So that is a proposed, that's a possible idea that we're, that, that we're looking at and, um, and I, I have a house listed for sale right near Columbia Street. I've answered every day. I think how cool this would be as a, as a potential option for, for, uh, not just there, but a couple of the sections that are along those steep hills like Amsterdam, Wolf Road. So.
We did talk about putting the ones we had back out.
But so the speed bumps are there.
Oh.
But they, they seem to get hit hard enough that they dislodge and then they're, so.
Yeah.
So Mike and I talked about how do we permanently attach those?
Yeah.
And apparently it's not as easy as, um, as, you know, just drilling them and then you have to make a concrete pad with a, uh, a screw receptacle. It's, it's, so.
Yeah, they do get moved, you know, from cars and then they weave through them, you know? Um, I mean, cars also, and this is, this is tough. Like you said, it's behavior of people.
I have to say something. I have to say something. Hold on. I can't hold it back anymore. I've been here for seventy-seven years and I get to see, living on the railroad tracks and I get to see anybody get hit with a train. I don't know. These parents must be fabulous if they can keep their kids under control when the trains go by. I mean, I've been here for, I mean, hate to break, but, um, I was seventy-seven and I was raised in the tracks. There was never any control. Nobody ever had any control over the tracks. They just had control over the children and I had to bring them in to make sure that they were safe. You know, my mother told me if you get hit by the train, you're gonna, the train, you're gonna be peanut butter. This is gonna kill you, you know? I mean, just have to make your children understand that there's a danger and you have to get them in or not provide for, um, some kind of childcare during that time. People have to control their kids. You can't always control the world. I'm sorry.
I always had some problems with the traffic coming out of eight hundred.
Well, that building has been there for years. I mean, when you're buying property, you gotta look around the neighborhood and see what it's like before you buy the house. You know what I mean?
So when we bought the house, it was.
Was the building there when you bought the house?
Correct. And it was closed off. That road was closed off.
The other issue is that people have illegally passed the school bus when it stopped in the work.
Well, that wasn't brought up. I don't know about the school bus. I'm just saying about the safety of your children. Um, we've dealt with railroad tracks.
Yeah.
I mean, and you can't do anything about the railroad tracks. But we're still here and a lot of children have been, have been raised.
I mean, I'm very fortunate that my children are still here.
Yes, you are. Well, you're not anymore.
So we're, we're it's a slow process, uh, and, uh, you know, it, it, it wasn't any glaring data that said that people, it, it seems faster than it is. Um, and the data prove that. So, so, um, but, you know, we're still, if there's a person who constantly speeds through, let the police know about that, you know? I mean, uh, that, that they can go talk to that person if you get a license plate, you know? So I, I would encourage you to keep doing that, you know, and we're just gonna work, work through what we, you know, what we can do as far as changing when we renovate that street.
Thank you.
Yeah. Lisa, I'm here. Mark.
Good, thank you.
Jason. You good?
Paul Harbor on, uh, Google Meet has, uh, his hand raised. Paul, go ahead.
I'll go ahead.
Hey, so I'm, I'm just doing a, a refresher on the, uh, issue with the, the, the train people and the fact that they still haven't cleared out that ditch uh, along the tracks. And also lately, since I'm up in the park for the park program every day, there's equipment going up and down the tracks. Uh, big, I don't know, the big yellow machines that are rolling up and down. And five out of six times that I've seen them, they don't blow their horn. One guy blew his horn the one, the one time when he went through the intersection of Menan Road. The other five just went whizzing right on through. Now, I know the gates are down, but despite what Diane said, kids will be kids. Um, but that dish has been a, an issue for a long time and it's, and it's gonna happen again. It's gonna flood Brookside. And one other thing with that AAA study that those guys did for Albany, they based, I don't know how much work they actually did about traffic flow and cars and all that stuff. But their study that they report, went to the state with, said that if someone gets hit by a car going thirty miles an hour, it'll do this much damage. If someone gets hit by a car doing twenty-five, they'll get hurt a lot less. So that may be something when you reach out to AAA, talk to them about that. And maybe it won't be that extensive study that with traffic flow and all that stuff. That's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. We're gonna see CP Rail again. Don has
They must be working on something somewhere. Um, they are putting, like you said, that things are going down, but they don't have any type of lights or horns or anything that
Don has apparently a friend at CP Rail, so when he's back, we'll see if he can figure out what's going on with those, those pieces of equipment. Um. And we'll also have him figure out why the horn's blowing, the four seven.
Yeah.
Couple of
I honestly think it's, gets me get right outside of Menance.
I'll tell you, that's a couple of times, if somebody listens. Oh, yeah.
You think it's
Five twenty comes through every morning down the south end, I can tell you that.
Yeah?
Oh, yeah.
You think it's from outside Menance?
Do you think it's from outside?
Oh, I'd say so.
Yeah.
My next door neighbor's on last or first house, bang, I look at it.
Because I was like, I like
You know, it sounds like a, like a sewer thing.
Yeah.
That, that thing
By the port.
I don't know how many dozen.
Yeah.
Crazy. You can hear for miles.
Well, I'll have Dan, Don, chat about the, the creek and, um.
And he pulled it.
Okay, anyone else? Online?
Nope.
Anything for executive session?
Uh, we do not have anything for executive session. We have a motion for adjournment.
Uh, motion for adjournment.
Seven?
All those in favor? All right, any opposed? I do.
Right.
Thanks, Bill.
You might best you
All right, I will.
You might best, yeah, I will, thank you.
Have a good night, everyone.